Welcome to tonight's forum featuring three candidates for two positions on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. Now, the candidates who are on the ballot are Chris Scriven, Fred Small. These are candidates for reelection along with Heather Cluff and William Haran. Now, the folks who are here to be a part of this is Fred Small, Heather Cluff, and William Haran. I'm Kevin Tochi, and I will serve as your moderator this evening. WHCA's Executive Director Eric Dresser will be manning the time. He will be our timekeeper for tonight's forum. Our forum is fairly simple. Opening statements are two minutes. Each candidate will have two minutes. We'll do a candidate's question and answer period. Candidates will have 90 seconds to answer the questions that are posed to them. Then we have the patented WHCA Speed Round. This is where candidates will try to navigate by answering yes or no, one to two sentences, or multiple choice. And then we'll do closing statements, which will be two minutes. Now, we did draw names before we started for opening statements, and our order starts with Mr. Fred Small. Fred, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Kevin. And I want to thank WHCA, Kevin, and company for everything that you do, not only tonight in supporting this, but as you do all year long. I want to thank William and Heather for coming. Very good opportunity for everyone to get different viewpoints and understand who's who and what people are. So, thank you, folks, as well. My name is Fred Small. This is my, would be my fourth term running for reelection now. Some people say, you know, it's time for new change, or different people. I say that I have unfinished business. I'm a 25-plus-year resident of Whitman. My wife is a townie. Both of my children came through the Whitman-Hanson school systems. They both graduated, and they're both residents. I love this town. It's very similar to the town I grew up with. That was Milton, Mass. It's just a feeling of community, a feeling, you know, that people help each other. People are there for people. And it's that sense of community that makes Whitman special. As far as unfinished business on the school committee, I have a lot of things I'd like to see get done. But in understanding what the committee is, by myself, I am nothing. I'm just a person. It's the committee as a whole that has the power. Full-day kindergarten is something that's spoken of. It's something that's important to get done. We made a very, very strong attempt back in 2016. The voters did speak, and the voters said no. And ultimately, it's up to the residents and the voters to say yes or no. It's not our decision. It's their decision as to fund it. One-to-one for Chromebooks, being able to take them home. I can remember having the conversation with Ruth Whitner. How can we accomplish that? It looks like we're finally getting very close to that. And I'm sure Kevin will have many more questions as to some of my other endeavors. I hear the bell.
Yes, and just so the candidates know, if you run out of time, you always can use the two minutes at the end for your closing statement and utilize that time. Okay, up next is Mr. William Haran. William, you have two minutes.
Thank you again, Mr. Tochi and WHCA9, for hosting this event and for hosting the forum before this. For those of you who don't know me, I'm William Haran. I've grown up in this town my entire life. I went to school here from kindergarten to my senior year. In my senior year, I had the opportunity to assistant teach in Hanson Middle School, and through that, I've learned that education is my passion. I'm running because through my experiences, both being in the schools, assistant teaching in the schools, and being, watching school committee activities for the past couple of years, I've seen a culture of underfunding, holding back our students and our towns. I'm running to change that. If I'm elected, I promise to stand up for parents and students, no matter what, even in the face of adversity. I promise to try to achieve our district goals by the time that we plan to achieve them. And that is why I'm running for school committee.
Thank you, William. Heather, you have two minutes for your opening statement.
Good evening. Thank you, Kevin, and WHCA. So, my name is Heather, and I'm running for school committee because I believe that we can do better for the students in our district. Now, I'm not saying that we are not doing great for them. I'm saying that we can do better, and that we're obligated to do better. So, my training is in special education advocacy, and I believe that all students in the district will benefit from what I have learned and throughout my multiple trainings with different state agencies. And academic regression because of the pandemic is a huge concern. Some studies say that younger students, 4th grade and below, will actually be six-plus months behind, especially in math, more than other related subjects. So, I want to make sure that all of our students have access to supports they may not have needed before the pandemic, supports that might keep them from either failing or possibly dropping out, because this has been tough for everyone. Students going back to school now have shown emotional and social and behavioral regression based upon anecdotal evidence from parents who I, who I've spoken to, whose children are having difficulties that they've never had before. Concentration, sitting still, focusing, some even have noted that their kindergarteners have forgot how to hold a pencil correctly. It doesn't necessarily mean there will be more children who have special education qualifying diagnoses. It just means they have more needs. So, I'm hoping that we can be proactive in the next few years and help all of our students and screen any child who is back below where they were pre-pandemic within the next six months.
Okay. Thank you. That was Heather Cluff with her closing, with her opening statement. Now, we will go into question and answer, the period. And before we get started, I want to say that the questions were done between WHCA and the Whitman Express in collaboration to be able to write these and be able to have good questions to ask you as candidates. Probably the first question that I would want to ask anybody who's running, if I was a candidate, is with all the turmoil that we've seen over the past couple of years regarding the school assessment funding method, why would you seek to run or want to retain a seat on the school committee? William Haran, you have 90 seconds.
For me, it's because I have been, these schools have been such a large part of my life. I went to them. I loved my teachers. I love this town. And education, like I said, is my passion. I'm running because even in the times of turmoil, our kids still need us. Our students still need us. We still need a school committee that's going to stand up for them, even if that's tough to do. And that's why I'm running.
Very good. Same question, Heather.
I believe we should move on from the statutory method debate. It was settled by a unanimous vote from ourselves back by continuing to bring it up and bring it up when we can be focusing on current and future needs of our students.
Very good. Mr. Small, same question.
And could you repeat it?
The question is, with all the turmoil that we've seen generated over the past couple of years regarding the school assessment funding method, why would you want to retain your seat on the school committee?
If not me, who? I still, as I said earlier, have unfinished business that I want to see obtained. I also want us to see, want to see us bring a sustainable budget. I believe that that is within our grasp over the next few years, to have a budget on an annual basis that's sustainable as a level services, and to take and augment what we're currently doing in the programs that we need to bring back, the items that we need in order to make our schools stellar. We need foreign language, but we don't need it just in the middle schools. We need to get foreign language right from elementary. And, you know, gosh, let me say it this way. What's wrong with Mandarin Chinese in the elementaries? What's wrong with having an elementary child learning Spanish, being able to be cultured to have multiple disciplines for language? What about the talented and gifted programs? We have some individuals that we graduate that are sharp, smart, but they're not challenged in our hallways. They're not challenged in our classrooms. We need to have programs that are going to challenge those children. We can be great. We can be better than what we are. We just need to be able to accomplish it. And I think in collaboration with the towns.
Okay.
Clear and articulate. And I'll wait till the end to...
Good. Thanks. Heather, you're going to get to answer the next question first. I know you had said at the end of your statement that, why can't we move on from this? I think a lot of times when things happen, they're prone to be repeated. So, I ask this question to the three of you. Looking back at the switch from alternative to the statutory method of funding, the school's annual assessment to teach town, could there have been a more equitable way to ease into a compromise or a change? You have 90 seconds.
I believe doing a stepped-down method, which we did to a degree, but not in a way that was less of a sticker shock, could have been possible had it been discussed prior to them deciding to re, to approve the new regional agreement. However, what's done is done, and the numbers don't lie. $4 million over six years is what Whitman taxpayers could have put towards other things within the town.
Okay. Same question, Mr. Small. 90 seconds.
Sure. Heather, I don't mean to pick on you, but we don't know that it's $4 million. We just have one person that says that it's $4 million. The numbers haven't been completely vetted out by the two people, Melissa King and Roger Hatch, that would actually be able to rip apart the Chapter 70 funding to know what the difference was. For instance, last year, it was $1.1 million worth of a swing before Whitman's assistance of $590,000. This year, without assistance, the base swing from one assessment to the next was $800,000. So, I mean, you have quite a disparity of over $300,000 just in one year. It is a number that swings as a pendulum. I don't know that there would have been an easier way. You have to sometimes rip off a Band-Aid and move forward. Definitively, the town of Whitman was paying more, at least the past few years. And this was brought to the attention back in 2016 to the administration by Whitman Selectmen, Mr. Lamatina, him and Chris George. Those were the two folks that discovered what was occurring. They brought it forward. The administration insisted we were doing statutory. First, it was, oh, the numbers swing. Then it was statutory. Then it was a conversation with our business manager. We do statutory.
Your time's up.
A phone call to DESI. What method do we use? Statutory. I'm sorry, I saw the yellow.
Time's up. Yep. Yep.
I saw the yellow, so I...
Good. That's good. So, that means when you get to a yellow light, you hit the gas.
Well...
Just checking. Mr. Haran, you have 90 seconds to answer the same question.
I think that the way that we switched over to statutory method was the correct way. I think that it was mutually agreeable to both towns. We saw that during last year's town meetings, where both towns did agree to it. There was some debate, but when it came around to say yes, it was a big, loud yes. I do believe, though, that we should have been switching over to statutory sooner than we did. I think that it was a failure on our elected officials to know exactly which method of funding we were using. There was a DESI memo put out in 2007 in every school district, saying that this, there was this new aggregate wealth model of funding that would be used going forward. We know that it costs this town millions. We know that. How much, how many millions? Maybe that hasn't been calculated, but we do know that it cost this town millions. Our elected officials should have known what method of funding we were using and should have made sure we were using the legal one or voting to use an alternative one every year.
Okay. Next question. What is your understanding of the school's annual budget, how it's funded, and what more needs to be done to consistently provide for the district's education moving forward? Mr. Small, 90 seconds.
What needs to be done? I understand our budget pretty, pretty well. About 48%, 49% of our revenues come from Chapter 70 funding. The balance comes from the assessments to the two towns, other than some transportation reimbursements, circuit breaker monies, and Title I grants that we receive. To move forward, the towns have a specific amount of money that they can get. And I know Whitman's budget far greater than Hanson's, but you have new growth, you have your excess levy capacity, how much you can raise the levy. Those are your additional revenues that the town can get, plus a small increase in their other funds. So, it's about $1 million for FY '22. Of that, they, they're committing 76% or $760,000, you know, for the school assessment for level services. We have to find a way to have our budget sustainable so that we're not in the blink of an eye going up $1,400,000, $1,500,000. And then you have other services such as trash, busing, you know, cleaning service, SJ services, all of those other items that raise as well. We need to become sustainable.
Same question, Mr. Haran.
Awesome. All right. As for our school budget, I understand that how, the pieces of it, how large chunk comes from the town, large chunk comes from Chapter 70, the state, and chunk comes from the federal government and grants, other grants as well. Going forward for our budget, I believe that establishing a budget subcommittee that would analyze what we were going to do with the budget that year, maybe a little bit ahead of when the rest of the committee would be doing so towards the beginning of the year, would be a good idea. In 2014, a DESI review of the district recommended that we do so. So, that's what I believe we should do.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Cluff, you, same question.
So, William sort of stole the words out of my mouth. I believe having a subcommittee of people on the school committee, keeping an eye on what may come down the pipeline as needs for capital projects and needs that the students may have going forward, would, rather than jumping on everything at once, would be a better way. Plus, educating people about why we need to invest in the schools, and not just on our children of the future stuff, but actual, this is what you get when you invest in education, because people are more willing to invest when they know they have a personal stake in it, even if they don't have students within the district.
Okay. I would follow that up with asking this particular question, and that is, and maybe someone could give me an answer here. And that is, when it comes to collective bargaining, do you believe that there should be a town official, or there should be officials from the town who are part of that conversation when there are union contracts that are negotiated, so the town is ahead of the curve, understanding what the schools are going to be spending when it comes to their contracts? We will start with Mr. Haran.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that having a liaison from the town in that discussion would be a good idea. Yes.
Okay. Do you want to expand on that, or just basically, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Fred, same question.
Yeah, and I've lobbied for that exact thing, to have somebody from the town within, you know, not just as a liaison, but actually in the negotiation session itself, so that they're quite aware of what we're talking about, because so much of our budget, $30 million is payroll, you know, between one union or another, you know, generally. So, there is a vested interest from the town. And the way they work, it, you do have the two towns or the two town administrators get together, and usually they have been swapping off, and one person ends up with the seat of the table in a vote, to vote along with the school committee. So, and that is required under Mass General law. So, they, they are required for that, but I would also like to see them within the room. As far as subcommittees go, you know, as we were talking about, an educational subcommittee, that's something that I want to see established now, not so much to tell administration what to do, but to get the needs of administration of how we can move forward and what, what our needs are to move forward, to establish the programs that I'm talking about with the languages, with the talented and gifted, to be able to put a dollar price tag on that, work within the towns, and that way there, we can talk to the residents, talk to the voters, lay out our case, and ask for those additional funds. That's how we're going to be able to move ahead in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Same question, Ms. Cluff. 90 seconds.
I believe that we absolutely should have a town official who is involved more intimately with it, because not only can they answer questions that may come up about, from the union's end, but also can ask questions on behalf of us in a more consistent manner, so there are no surprises, and there is an active discussion about what needs versus wants and where we can meet in the middle. And I believe that if we work like that, we can find the best ways to address the children in the district's needs.
Very good. Okay. Next up, Whitman is in line to build a new middle school. What is your understanding as to percentage that the Mass School Building Authority is willing to give the town compared with the town is going to fund, and can Whitman residents afford such a project? Heather, you have 90 seconds.
I am afraid I do not know the exact percentage. However, if we look forward, the middle school is going to need a lot of work. So, why not invest? Because I know there is a substantial amount that we would get from the state. Why not invest in building a new building that is modern, that is one that will fill the needs of our students now and for decades to come, as opposed to putting money, sinking money into a sinking ship? Because the middle school is definitely tired, and I think it's about time that we replace it.
Follow-up question. What model would you like, would you like to see, five through eight? Would you like to see six through eight? If you had any say, a voice in the matter, what would you like to see the model be for that school?
Personally, I would like the five through eight, so that the students in Whitman and Hanson are getting an identical experience. And I know it's not necessary, but it's nice for them to be able to relate on the same level as they get older. Peers have friends in each town, and that'll also align their schedules with each other. So, parents who have, like, daycare situations and stuff, and also friends who can, want to play together, can be together.
Very good. Mr. Small, same question. Whitman Middle, Whitman is in line to build a new middle school. What's your understanding of the situation, what the percentages are? Again, it's just a question I'm throwing out to someone. It's your turn, William. It's not, and what, just to see how studied you are on this particular issue. And can the town afford this?
And I do have an advantage. I am the chairman of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee.
Okay.
The percentage is roughly 50%. And there are things that you can do in your design that you can get more points for. When we built the high school, and I was also a proud member of the High School Feasibility Study Committee, and then the High School Building Committee, that high school's LEED certified. It is one of the most ecologically friendly schools to date in the country. We built it so well, the state took the plans, and that became the model high school for Massachusetts. Many people don't even realize we have a 10,000-gallon gray tank. All the rainwater from the roof runs into the gray tank, and that's what's used to flush our toilets. You know, it's a win-win situation there, you know, reusing natural resources. So, as we look at if it's determined that the middle school is going to be a new building, then we would also look at what are the LEED certifications that we can do to make it more ecologically friendly, and to also make sure that we can have it so that we can get greater reimbursement. As far as being affordable, we have different projects that are coming off of the town rolls. The high school be paid for in '27.
Okay.
And I believe there was a SOAR project that's rolling off very shortly as well. So, that would help the taxpayers.
Okay. Again, let's not go over your time, try to stay within your time limit here. Follow-up question. What model would you like to see? Would you like to see five through eight, six through eight? What would you like to see?
I want to see what they're saying. We have a six through eight currently that's working. I want to quiz our administration more and find out if we went through a five through eight, are we going to still be maintaining two elementary buildings and neighborhood schools that way? Because if we're adding five through eight and adding an extra grade simply to accommodate the town of Hanson, because they ended up having to go to a five through eight because they wouldn't build a new elementary school, I don't know that that's fair to the taxpayers of Whitman. So, it'd have to be looked at very thoroughly, if that's the only reason we're going to a five through eight. Right now, it's going to be looked at for both uses, and as we step forward, that's when we'll be making a determination along with MSBA.
Okay. Thank you. Same question, Mr. Haran. You've got 90 seconds.
Like what Mr. Small said, I understand that it's roughly half what the state is going to cover with the middle school if that ends up going through as a new building. If it does go through as a new building, I believe that working with the towns, we would be able to pay for it. I think it's fantastic that this is happening. Often times, towns will get turned away from the state several times before they're able to even get a feasibility study. And we were able to get one, I believe, on our first try, which is pretty fantastic. So, this is a great thing that's going on, and I think the towns should embrace it. Yeah.
Okay. So, my next question will be concerns about COVID. We know that COVID has had an effect on our children in this district and districts across the Commonwealth, many of them having to deal with remote learning. What can be done? What can the school committee do? What can the district do to help those who are struggling and trying to catch up? And I don't know if there's a financial resolution, but I want your thought as a potential school committee member. Mr. Haran, you have 90 seconds.
I think it's important that we use our SR funds and other relief funds from the federal government appropriately, and for issues that pop up in students that we didn't see before the pandemic, or, yeah, issues that we didn't see before the pandemic with students, new issues. I think also adjusting, I'm sorry. I'm a bit frozen. We need a school committee that is willing to fund schools to be able to come back from such a horrible pandemic where kids, they're, they've never gone through something like this. We have, as a society, haven't seen something like this in a very long time. You're not going to get a committee that's going to be able to build back better from all of this, from a committee that hasn't consistently stood up for school budgets anyway.
Okay. Same question, Ms. Cluff.
I think that addressing the students' needs can be done across the board in many different fashions. It can be anything between teachers allowing a short movement break in the middle of class so that students can get up and move around, because they're used to being able to do so when they're at home doing virtual learning, to allowing students to have a small handheld fidget, like a Koosh Ball or something, just so they're not distracted from the actual academics. But students are going to require remediation academically. They're going to require tutors, possibly. They're going to require extra help. There are students who may even end up having to repeat a grade or possibly have to retake the MCAS at a high school level because they are behind. But having extra people on hand, such as behavioral staff in the elementary schools to help with the issues, more social, emotional, with the little emotional with the little kids and the transition age kids, you know, fourth, fifth, growing into middle and middle going into high school. But having the academic help available to all the students would be a great resource. I know it'll cost money, but it would be a worthwhile investment.
Okay. Mr. Small, same question. You have 90 seconds.
The role of the school committee is to provide to the administration the resources that are needed in order to help every child that has regressed. We have to not only be able to identify the children that have seen regression, but also identify what we need to do in order to pull them back up and get them back to the level where they need to be and then to the level where we want every kid to be to prosper. So it's our job to provide the resources and listen to our administration to use the resources that they have available. We do have other resources. We have ESTER II funds that have still not been expended yet. Over $300,000 there. It was the ESTER III monies, which can be spent over a three-year period, that a portion, that's where the $775,000 is within our budget, a very large portion of that $775,000 is going toward the regression and regression programs so that we can identify and work with these children. So it's definitively on the radar with our administration, and it's probably the number one priority that we're going to have, or they're going to have, I should say, in making sure that every kid is not left, you know, that no kid's left behind.
Okay. We're going to start where we've left off, Mr. Small. What is your assessment of the job that Jeff Simonak, the school superintendent, is doing as far as providing educational opportunities for district students and his team when it comes to presenting an annual budget? You have 90 seconds.
Never thought I'd be at a loss for words. There are frustrations that I have. I believe that the superintendent means well in everything that he does and wants to see the absolute best, you know, for our children. I think he's also a realist. It's just a question of how we arrive at the realities that we all face. He's a very hardworking person. He's assembled a very good team, and he has a good vision as to what he sees, what he wants to see accomplished. My frustrations and perhaps things have been just blown out with COVID and other things happening. I tend to want to move at a faster pace and see things done more quickly. And sometimes our administration works a little bit slower. That's a personality thing for me. I can't read into that personality-wise for myself where committee, and you know, it's the committee that speaks, not an individual.
Okay. My follow-up to you is if you're re-elected, what suggestions might you offer the superintendent and his team to hopefully have a little bit more expediency or have a little bit more robust results?
If I was going to do that, we'd have a conversation and we'd have a face-to-face conversation. It's not something I'd bring up in this type of forum. I don't believe in, you know, things going out in public. And my frustrations, you know, with different things and wanting to move faster, it's things that we have spoken about, you know, and he's shown me where I've been wrong about things. But we don't know until we have a conversation, you know, and that's the way I personally handle myself.
Very good. Mr. Haran, same question. That is your assessment of the job that the school superintendent, Jeff Simonak, is doing, not only educational opportunities for the district students, but when it comes to putting forth an annual budget?
I think that Superintendent Simonak is a hard worker and he does do a good job of running the meetings, getting information to parents, and running the schools. I think that when he was my high school principal, he did an excellent job as well. I do have frustrations as well. For me particularly, it comes during budget season. I think that he could be advocating more to be achieving the district goals that him and the committee are setting forth for themselves. Full-day K has been a district goal for a very long time. I think at this point, the conversation should have been had between administration and the committee and town on how we're going to fund that. So I do have frustrations there. But that's how I feel.
Okay. Ms. Clough, same question, 90 seconds.
I believe that Superintendent Simonak is doing a pretty good job. He's only human. He does as much as he can, and he advocates for all of our students. He is, he and his team, whether it be teachers with, through in the district or our special education staff district-wide or our out-of-district coordinator, everything's working really well. And I could only hope that it continues going forward. And I think that the only thing that I could say that people could do differently, and this goes for almost everything in the world nowadays, is people listening to each other and maybe more community outreach and seeing what, even if it is a small idea, throw the idea out there to the town and see what people say, even if it's an informal survey, because we don't know what's possible or what is fundable if we don't ask.
Very good. Mr. Haran brought up a very good point in regards to full-day kindergarten. I have to ask you is how important is implementing such a program, but at what cost? And we will start with Mr. Haran.
I believe it's very important that we get this done. A lot of surrounding towns in Massachusetts have full-day K. We're in the 10% of towns that don't. And studies show that kids do benefit from that class time. We're even seeing on the federal level the possibility of pre-K becoming universal. So I think that it's about time that our towns get around on it, on the cost. I think it's possible to maybe don't introduce free full-day K, all in one year, all in one go. There are towns in Massachusetts who have eased into full-day K. So every year, put more of the budget towards it while cutting tuition for parents. I think that a model like that, as well as working with the state, working with our state representatives and state senators, we can get that done. We can get that funded in a responsible manner.
Ms. Clough, same question.
I also believe that it is absolutely necessary because we're actually putting our kids at a deficit by not giving them the time to do the social, emotional work and not just the academic work. The difference between a kindergartner who's in full day and one that's in the half-day program, both of them get the same core academics, but the student who is in the longer program is more likely to be screened and noticed if they have a disability, which being diagnosed early is the easiest way to have success. And it gives kids more of an opportunity to be social and learn how to be a student because you don't want someone learning how to sit at a desk and for a long period of time and how to be a classmate in the first grade. They need to be ready to learn academic-wise then.
Okay. Mr. Small, same question, 90 seconds.
Full-day K is very important. And, you know, not only by having the early intervention of full-day K, do you keep everyone involved on the same plane in the same learning field, but you find that when you get into the latter years, as far as second, third, fourth grade, there's far less services required for that child because they've had the opportunity to learn at the same pace as everybody else and they're not left behind. So it's very, very important. The big question is how do you pay for it? Currently, there's one bill that's in the consolidated amendments right now up on the Hill that would provide for $2 million worth of grants to implement full-day K. That may be a way of doing it. Another way of doing it is as our enrollment continues to decline, but our Chapter 70, and here's where we're in the Hold Harmless for over $6 million, but the Chapter 70 doesn't go backwards, we may be able to, if our budget can be sustainable and stay the same, be able to absorb different personnel and just switch people around and be able to start, you know, funneling resources to full-day K in that regard. So there are a number of different ways, and I don't want to say that those are my ideas. Some of that, you know, comes from administration. I mean, our state rep, there's a $750,000 earmark that Allison Sullivan's been trying to get for us to start full-day K.
Very good. This is going to be the final question of the question and answer round. And what I'm going to ask you is, you have 90 seconds. Is there something that we haven't discussed here? That's an issue, whether it's in this race, something that needs to be discussed in regards to the school committee, the school district? We will start with Ms. Clough. You have 90 seconds.
I believe that there is more than half a million dollars being spent yearly for tuition for out-of-district special education students whose needs we are not able to service in this school or in the district. I would love to be able to take a look and see what is needed to bring at least some of those students back to the district and see if, like, look and see if there's a commonality of need and then bring, and see what we can do to bring students back, and that will save money in the long run. It may take investment in, say, another teacher or someone who's specialized in something, but it would absolutely benefit all of us in the long run to have fewer students having transportation out of district, having tuition out of district. And it would bring more students into their communities, which also fosters diversity and helps other students who are, quote, "typical" to become better peers and have a more rounded experience.
Okay. Mr. Small, same thing. Something we haven't addressed, an item or a topic or issue we haven't talked about. You have 90 seconds.
And I'm going to address Heather's statement just real quick. What you're saying is something that the administration already is and has been working on and has had some success with. It's very slow-going, but it's something that they have been doing. It's funny because as a school committee member, you want to dive in and fix the world, and you can't. That's the hard part. You have to know, you know, what our roles are, you know, as far as that goes. The one thing we haven't discussed is the culture and the partnership with Hanson a little bit. You know, it's contentious at times, the fact that they are looking at a deregionalization or at least a committee to study that. What would the cost be, you know, if they decided to do that? Would it be K through eight or would it be K through 12? You know, I look at, you look at the town of Abington, which happens to have around 2,100 students, same as Whitman. Okay, they spend about $32 million annually on their education. They get about $10 million, $11 million in Chapter 70 funding. Okay, Whitman, if you broke out the numbers, I believe is responsible for about 65% of the $25 million. So you're talking 15-plus million bucks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Haran.
Yeah.
Same thing. 90 seconds. Item, topic we haven't discussed, but you want to talk about for a few minutes.
Mr. Small did brush on it, but I'd like to talk about Hold Harmless because of our dropping enrollment, because we have less students than we did at one point. We still do qualify for all the same grants and things, but that's only through allowance from the state, essentially. It would be better to get out of Hold Harmless. It would be better to have, to be getting students rather than losing them every year. How you do that? Well, make the towns attractive to parents and especially young parents. And how we can do that is by getting full-day K or cutting tuition year after year, by introducing foreign language at a younger age, like in the elementary school, and by also getting better special needs programs so that if students are here in these towns, we don't need to be shipping them out of town to a different school. So that would be, Hold Harmless, I think, is important, and I think we need to start boosting enrollment rather than watching that trend line go down.
Okay. We have come to the end of our questions. Now it's time for us to move into the WHCA speed round. Your answers will either be yes or no, one to two sentences and not a run-on sentence, or multiple choice. I will, of course, tell you what that is when I give you the question. We'll start with you, Mr. Small. If a school district could add a program, what would you like it to be? You have one to two sentences.
Full-day kindergarten that would include foreign language for those children after they get out of kindergarten.
Very good. Mr. Haran.
Free full-day K for all students.
Okay. And Ms. Clough?
I agree. Free full-day K for all students, possibly even a bilingual classroom if parents are interested in having immersion for education, early education.
Okay. We'll start with you, Ms. Haran, Mr. Haran. If you had to vote to make a cut to one of the following items, now this is multiple choice, name one item you wouldn't sacrifice. Would it be language classes, after-school programs, sports, or music and art?
From those, language.
Okay, language, okay.
I would refuse to.
Ms. Clough?
Oh, that's a tough one. But I would say language because it is what is required in this world currently, and being bilingual is a major advantage for everyone.
Okay. And our last, our last question. Would you ever support an effort to deregitalize? Ms. Clough?
I would need to look into the financial amounts of it and what would end up happening with the school building and what have you. But if that's what the voters wanted, I absolutely would support it.
Okay. Mr. Small, one to two sentences.
One to two sentences. If it, if deregionalization were going to benefit the students of Whitman and needed to be done because we cannot advance a budget, because you cannot get the funds, because if Hanson doesn't pass funds, Whitman doesn't get funds, then yes, I would support it.
Very good. Y'all did a commendable job. Time for us now to move into closing statements. You each will have two minutes for a closing statement. We reverse our order from earlier, which means that Heather, Clough, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Thank you again for the opportunity to answer these questions and foster dialogue between the three of us because the more people know, the better an educated vote they can make. And I believe that the students in the district are great. They're doing wonderful, but they can always do better. There is never a reason to settle for what's working just because there isn't a visible path forward at the time. There's always a need to foster discussion between parents and students and throwing out different ideas, even involving older students at the high school level because they can tell you what works and what doesn't work for them. And if we invest in our students, and I mean all of them, the gifted ones absolutely need the extra challenge. And on the other end of the spectrum, the special education students also need a hand, and we can't play one against the other with saying, oh, we can't fund this program because of that program. There's no reason for creating a false dichotomy of competition. So, and that goes with the two towns as well. There, we have to work together, you know, for better or worse, in order for us to benefit all of our students. Because yes, voters from Whitman are going to vote on what affects their kids at the elementary level, but what their kids learn at the elementary and middle school level is going to affect them in high school. And that's where you get, that's where you work together. If you don't have the ability to get everything that you need before then, you're going to have some students at a major disadvantage, and there's no good reason for it. Sometimes thinking outside of the box is exactly how you need to get things done.
Very good. That was the Clough with her closing statement. We'll now give two minutes to Mr. William Haran. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
Okay. In my opinion, these towns In my opinion, these towns have had a culture of underfunding for years, and this has eaten away at our schools and our kids' chances in life. I believe that these towns and our towns' voters are willing to come together and want to come together and do better for these schools and do better for these kids. We can get full-day K for all students. We can at least start cutting the tuition. We can get language younger, at least in the middle schools, if not in elementary. We can get better foreign lang, or better special needs programs, hire more paraprofessionals that were fired just in the last couple of years. But I feel like you're not going to get that with the current committee. I don't think that the current committee has done its job well enough, and I'm running because I think that I can.
That was Mr. William Haran. He is, got his two minutes for a closing statement. Finally, Mr. Fred Small, you have two minutes for your closing statement, sir.
Thank you. I want to thank WHCA once again, and I want to thank everybody that's watched this. By listening to us and hearing what we have to say, I think everybody is of the better. You will find that there is some literature that's being passed out door-to-door even that contains fallacies. There's one piece of literature that says the current school committee should have known better about the funding formula. It's in Charting the Course. If anyone has a question, my number is 781-523-1900. I'll be glad to share the book with you, okay? It's not true. Okay, so, you know, when people just put something on a piece of paper, doesn't mean it's true. We have tried to get full-day K. It takes a committee, and it takes a town to vote for it. Doesn't mean we're not going to try and think of different alternatives of ways to get it done, but it's going to take time, and we're in there pushing and trying to get it done as quickly as we can. The education of our kids is the most important thing in this world. We owe it to children to leave them a better place than we inhabited and to do better for them than our predecessors did for us, in an awful lack of trying. But the world is a changing thing. You know, as our current chair, who's outgoing after many years, used to say, you look at this phone, okay? This phone, 25 years ago, couldn't even have been thought of. This was on TV when I was a kid. It was Dick Tracy talking into his wrist, and now it's real. The world is a changing place. Okay, Whitman-Hanson has graduated some fantastic people, you know, not only talented musicians such as Lenny Baker, but also airline pilots. If you go on JetBlue today and you fly down to Florida, you may be getting a pilot that graduated Whitman-Hanson. Never mind the folks that are in biotechnology that I know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Small. Today's forum featured candidates who are seeking two positions, open positions, on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. We want to say thank you to the candidates who participated, Fred Small, Heather Clough, William Haran. And we hope that holding this particular forum better informed the residents as to where they stand on the particular issues. Remember, it's up to you to get out and vote. On May 15th, polls will be at Whitman Town Hall. If you have questions in regards to what time the polls open, they close, whether you're a registered voter, any details that you need to know, contact the town clerk's office. Paul Watson, Eric Dresser, Ryan Tully, and the rest of the WHCA production team. I'm Kevin Tocchi. Have a good day.
Thank you, Kevin.